Called to order the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, the 14th of February. Happy Valentine's Day 2017. Let the record show that Councilor Morton is excused and Councilor Hicks, he called me, his kids were sick and now he's sick. And he didn't want to give everybody his germs. So I said, "Thank you very much for not getting us all sick." So, thank you. Good job. Speaker. Okay, and we're adding the attorney on the speaker. Is she there?
I am.
Thank you.
Loud and clear, Kristi.
You are very loud and clear. Kristi, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay.
So for everybody up there, when you want to ask questions of Kristi, please talk into your microphones. She'll be able to hear that.
Okay. Great. We'll get her when we get there. Council members, you have January 10th and January 24th minutes in your packet. Are they okay?
I move to approve the ten minutes for January 10th and January 24th.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Fastest due. Does your comment? Okay. Moving on to reports and presentations. Under my report, let me just update you on a couple of things. I attended City Hall Day sponsored by the League of Oregon Cities to talk about municipal issues at the legislature. I was joined, Councilor Hicks was able to join me and I met with our state senator and our state legislator. I talked about recreational immunity and urban bill. Had a chance to meet with Congressman Schrader and share concerns about transportation. The Salem, it's called the Salem River Crossing, but I suggested that it might not be just a city. We should think about it, not just about Salem, because it has economic development implications for the whole region. And it was well received by him and also the cities of Kaiser and Salem really appreciated that we're into it as long and also with Dallas. Also attended the Council of Governments, Council of Governments Board of Directors is having a special meeting this week. Some of you may know, the executive director had to leave the operation because of some extremely serious health issues. And so we are hiring a new executive director for the Council of Governments. And so that's, had the opportunity to attend the Pope County Fire District Number One swearing-in ceremony and also got a chance to present at the Save the City address. And I think that's on, is that on YouTube or the web, on the city webpage or something?
It will be on YouTube shortly.
Oh, it's going to be on YouTube? Okay.
As well as the webpage and our Facebook.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. I use lots of pictures, so you don't have to look at me. And then also I had the pleasure of attending the Smart Ag meetup that took place. And there was 50, 55 people in the rooms, 10, 70 it ended up. My gosh. Sean did a great job. The number of people came, folks flew in. And so it was good, so it's been busy. Mr. City Manager, this is your portion of the report. Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'm sure you've left me a lot. That's fine. So, let's see, a couple of different things. One, as you can see, and I think we told you our city recorder will be out for a month. So we're going to do our best to make sure that goes smoothly. We've got, you know, Michelle Holmes, who's doing, aren't that many, and I'm sure she's going to do a great job. So, I just said that my are high for her, so she'll be fine. So I also was at that meetup and I agree, that was a great event. I think our director came out there with a number of different possibilities of going forward. I think Intellum remains engaged in our community. We had the school districts enable university there and farmers and business, and the ag department. So nice day, nice mix of folks and a great, you know, I just said, a great opportunity to sort of get involved with, you know, and sort of lead the way on some pretty innovative stuff. I also was at the city day and some mayor covered that very well. There's several issues of particular concern to us that we're, you know, we're going to stay focused in on is one, that we not lose our tools for economic development, the form of urban renewal. There's an ongoing, you know, there's been an attack on that tool for some time because it's a very misunderstood tool out there in the community, but it is a great enhancer for rural communities. This is, you know, this rural communities, it gives us a little ability to compete with urban communities in terms of what we can do in economic development. We want to be very supportive of the Business Oregon's budget. They have, we have an opportunity there to secure some funding in both behalf of the residents and everything. We want to pursue that. And that, so we're hopeful with their budgets. We can help them with their budget, they can help us. So that's on the radar for us as well. And we may call on you at some point to be helpful on our behalf as well. We reach out to your elected officials, because elected officials love to talk to elected officials. Much more than they like talking to staff. They know that you're doing it on your time, not on paid time. So that makes a big difference in that life. So then we, and then finally, another area that's certain of all cities is the fate of recreational immunity. The courts took away a protection we thought we had and caught them off. And so we're trying to get our legislature to reenact that protection on our behalf. It has to do with what happens in our parks, who's liable when something, when somebody has an accident and what, and the city is well protected. Our employees have been subject to litigation. The city has to stand and defend our employees anyway, so it's, it's sort of like, you know, I don't know what they did with this, with this particular court, you know, court outcome, but it's not very helpful to us. So that's, that's something else that we are engaged in the legislative session on. So again, you know, if you get a call from us saying, "Please help," please heed that call. So we are reminders for a couple of meetings upcoming. March 11th is the retreat again. That'll be, I believe downstairs in the event center. March 1st is our annual budget orientation for members of the Senate, but certainly for new members. So if you're new, our counselor, new to Budget Committee, or both, March 6th at 6:00 PM downstairs. Will be doing an orientation downstairs or?
I don't know that we've decided yet.
So it's still a little bit of a question, but we will, we will have that information to you. And I think there's a note sent out already, but we'll, we'll have that, the specific information of the location is not yet determined or determined yet. I mentioned this downstairs, I want to just get on the record upstairs as well for the video audience. And we are working together with Fall City to help them with their code enforcement issues and hope to provide them all these access to our court, which they would pay for. And I think, I think it's a real way, for both communities, it's a chance for us to be helpful, perhaps find out a little bit of our costs, not much, but also, you know, just hopefully to be helpful to them. You're always wanting to be helpful to your fellow cities because there's always a time to reach around and ask for help. So that's, that's an opportunity to reach out and help or let them reach out to us. Let's see, we've talked about the bad. We, we had a visit from the House Majority Leader, Jennifer Williamson. I don't know if, Mayor, did you mention that in your? No, you did not. Go ahead. Okay. So she visited both specifically to get a look at the events landing project. They're real interested in success stories and they're real interested in that particular story. So, you know, for that one, I think that visit may, you know, it may work out very well for us. That's where we, that's where we had our start in looking at this Oregon budget for some help with our, some of our financial needs on that project. So hopefully that, you know, that works out well. And she was definitely very impressed with what she saw. She's out of Portland area, but she is the House Majority Leader. And so that's, it's useful for to see what's going on in our rural community. Mayor, I don't know if you wanted to add to that at all?
No, I think that's fine. Just doing good.
Okay. Just a couple more things and I'll get out and then let you go with the agenda. So in the area of land use, we've had two site designer reviews approved. One for Striker Road, that one has been appealed. Actually, two appeals were filed on that project. So we think at this point, March 13th is the date that they'll come in front of the planning commission. And we're not sure when that comes back to the council. At least at this point, March 13th appears to be the date that it does go to the planning commission. That is a quasi judicial hearing, so I'm not going to encourage you to go to that meeting because it very likely will come back to you and then you'll have, you may have some part-time issues to talk about when you come back to the city council. So I won't say you can't do it, but you know, be aware that it could make, it could create problems for you if you ultimately get to hear that thing as a city council. The city attorney can give you more advice. The second one was an SDR review that was not appealed and that is going forward. That's the East Street condominium. So that, that project is moving forward onto the next phase of design and its engineering with the asset. So we're looking, we're looking forward to that project getting started, sees some plans, plan documents, and start getting approvals, go to construction somewhere here. So that's what I have for this evening. Let's see if you have questions.
Questions for the city manager?
I have a question on the landing.
Yes?
How much bad dirt was found that we had to get rid of? What was the cost, roughly the dollar cost of?
I think it was about $80,000.
The last I heard from Steve is about $70,000, but he said it might be a little more.
Seven zero, eight zero thousand?
Yeah.
Between $70,000 and $80,000 was the ultimate cost. So far, that's been fully picked up by the state.
Okay. Good.
There's nothing else? Okay, we're going to keep moving forward. We have ordinance, vacating portion of Thorpe Street. And you have a document in front of you, Ms. Danko? I think you're going to tell me.
This is, this does what we decided last night.
Exactly. You have a public hearing. It's a January 24th meeting. And you directed us after that public hearing to prepare the legislation to go ahead and vacate that piece of Thorpe Street that's been provided for you. It's a council bill number 2017-04. If you can, if you have any questions. Any questions? This is the off-reading legislation to do what we decided to do last night. If there's no questions, this is an action item. Someone's no?
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill 2017-04 in full as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
Have a motion?
Second.
And I have a second. Is there any discussion? I hear no discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. I'll wait for it. An ordinance vacating the portion of Thorpe Street and stating an effective date. Someone would like to read the second one?
Okay. I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill number 2017-04 for the second time by title only.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. An ordinance vacating the portion of Thorpe Street and stating an effective date. And the third one, please?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance council bill number 2017-04, second.
Yeah, I have a motion, the second discussion. I think everybody's okay, everybody's okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Moving on to the Chief Mason, a nuisance abatement update. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council. A brief update tonight regarding the property at 1383, 1385 Picture Street, which you all declared a general nuisance and gave instructions to make an update on the status of this meeting. The progress that was reported at the last meeting has continued. I would not say that the violation is completely abated at this point, but it is to a point where we are working, and I can't say what the property owner, because we've been working with other people who were doing a majority of the work, but we would like to continue on this same direction, not doing an abatement, but working with them to try to get it completely abated. The owner, who we do want to work with, has been serving some time in jail and he will be getting out in February and we hope to recontact him then and work out final details. So with your permission, we'd like to continue on without writing any search warrants after David's hiring people, trying to get the work done the way that it's been being done, since you declared it a general nuisance.
Questions for the chief? Like the flavors. So maybe another update in a month? Would that be appropriate time?
March would probably be a better, yeah.
That would be good. All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to go into new business, 7.1 amended telecommunications and cable ordinance. Our city attorney, Kristi Muntzen, is on the telephone. Ms. Muntzen, to you.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I didn't know if David wanted to provide you with a short summary of his CIN or not. I'm happy to proceed or I'm happy to wait for the summary.
Whichever you prefer. I'm happy to just pick over you, just so you, so just structurally you have, we've had a conversation about this previously and what you have in front of you is the proposed form of ordinance to, which Kristi will go over the particulars of that. You also have, if you are, if you are good with the ordinance, then the next step would be to consider the resolution, which is actually the fee setting. We do have one modification to that resolution that we want to have you make if you get to the point of considering that for adoption. So I'm not going to say anymore. I'll let Kristi do the particulars of what we're doing here. You do have the report in front of you. We've had that for two days. Okay?
Thank you. So this is proposed amendment from staff to two ordinance that was adopted recently in 1998, 2001, pertaining to telecommunications services and cable services. You're lucky to have a right-of-way ordinance already, many cities don't. And so we're really only offering minor amendments. And the reason we're offering these very minor amendments is because in May of 2016, the ordinance Supreme Court decided to take the contrast to Eugene and decided it in favor of Eugene, which supported the imposition of franchise fees or license fees on telecommunications companies and cable service companies, which accounts for all the services they provide, cables, internet, and voice. So sometimes we charge a percentage of gross revenue fee and this affirms our right to charge by percentage of gross revenue based on all the services that providers is providing based on the fact that they're in to be right-of-way and using a public asset for private financial gain. The amendments that we're offering you are housekeeping amendments to strengthen and reaffirm that purpose, that we are supposed to be for the protection, maintenance, and management of our right-of-way. There are three different types of amendments to do. We try not to mess too much with the good thing. So we offer them pretty selectively. They are a clerical amendment, clarification amendment, and then an amendment that offers the city more flexibility. And just to give you an example of what a clerical amendment is, publicly, or do it on page one of Exhibit A of the ordinance. You'll see that we capitalize along to the definitional terms. That's a clerical amendment. If also you look on page 11, here is the one I put to page.
Page 11 of the proposed ordinance is page 43.
The Exhibit A to this ordinance, it's actually Section 30.95. And it's all throughout 30.95, items one through five, you see we added the definition of telecommunications carrier. And really we add that as a first clerical, clarification that it's not a franchise fee that have to do these things, it's telecommunications carriers who have not yet gotten franchised. So it's clerical and it's a clarification edit. Lastly, the last clerical edit I wanted to bring up to you, because this is kind of a type of edit, so you can see what we were trying to do here, is we changed the definition on page four of telecommunications service. And we use a typical definition that's offered from the League of Oregon Cities that encompasses all kinds of telecommunications service. This did not broaden your existing definition, it just adds more detail and leads to an argument that we might have left out, that type of telecommunications service, like having a very simple definition. So really quickly, I'll just tell you what some of the clarification edits were, just so you can know what we're trying to do here. If you look on page two, Section 30-3. This is an important edit and these kinds of edits are sprinkled throughout the ordinance with both the telecommunications service ordinance and the cable service ordinance. And it says, "These fees are charged for the privacy of the city's public right-of-way, which are publicly owned assets and for the privilege of doing business within the city." Just clarify what our purpose is, is that for managing right-of-way. One last, and like I said, these are sprinkled throughout the ordinances, but I thought I'd use one last example on page nine, you get the way of all terms here. And that's 30-66A. This clarification edit is actually working to the benefit of the telecommunications company and the city. It says, "When a permit fee is in the right-of-way, does it mean we're affecting the right-of-way?" And I have the definition. "And such work causes destruction or negatively affects or interferes with condition in the right-of-way, it shall promptly remove destruction." So helpful, it's not just, it's the aim of creating a good partnership with people on our right-of-way. And the last heads of edit, and an important heads of edit, you know now, is a flexibility edit for the city, for the city, excuse me. And this is best specified on page 17. This is an important edit, Section 30-165. Again, we've not changed anything specifically in this edit. You will still be charging a franchise fee in an amount that the council determines is appropriate and in an amount that includes with federal state law. However, there's a provision that franchise fee may be set by resolution of the city council. And the city council may establish different categories of franchise fees for different types of telecommunications carriers. Lastly, in the city, that the franchise fee based upon a percentage of gross revenue is specified the definition of percentage of gross revenue. But also, you flexibility that different franchise fees, the goodness of compliance of federal and state law. But it also says, "When you set them, you shall follow and use certain definitions." Lastly, if a provider is not paying a franchise fee, it clarifies that every telecommunications carrier and in the cable service, it says cable service carrier, this cable service ordinance, excuse me. It specifies that if they are not, if somebody's not paying a franchise fee, they haven't agreed upon franchise agreement for whatever reason, that they shall pay a right-of-way use fee in an amount equivalent to the franchise fee. So that's what I call a non-spuendre approach. We have a franchise fee, but if they're not paying, we still have to pay the right-of-way use fee if they're using our right-of-way. Those are the types of edits, I'm sure you've had a chance to look them over, but it's not only these kinds of ordinances are always included, but ones provided in the background as a reference. If the council would like to adopt this ordinance, be two ordinances, you will at some point need to adopt a resolution setting that fee as we discussed in Section 30.165. And it does provide you to interact of a fee resolution for your consideration. And that's in the packet also. And I don't know if the council would like me to discuss the resolution now or if you're happy with what you reviewed. I'm happy with you, whatever the council prefers.
Are there questions for the speaker at this point regarding the information, choose discussions? Let's just do this hunk by hunk. Is that okay? Is everybody okay with this? I appreciate it, the, both the red line and the final. Does that look okay with everybody? Okay. Okay. This is a, is this an action item? If someone would like to make action?
I guess I do have a question.
Please do.
We're not at this time talking about any, some of the fees or anything like that.
That's a separate, this, yeah, that will be the next conversation.
Okay. Your question.
Okay. If someone would like to, it's on top of page 28. Page 28.
To me.
Go ahead, Ms.
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill number 2017-03 in full as the text, as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
A motion? Second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. An ordinance amending Independence Municipal Code, Chapter 30, telecommunications and cable, stating an effective date. Someone would like to leave the next one?
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill number 2017-03 for the second time by title only.
Second.
I have a second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. An ordinance amending Independence Municipal Code, Chapter 30, telecommunications and cable stating an effective date. The last one?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance council bill number 2017-03.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? I thought, I really appreciated the detailed explanation and really liked that. Think that was helpful. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And, and opposed, and the most passes. Okay, let's move to the resolution setting fees. Ms. Muntzen?
Thank you. So as I was across the aisle in your ordinance, you are provided with, provided with the opportunity to set the franchise fee for resolution. And that is free to review, please review, including your third. Thank you. The resolution sets fees for all cable providers, telecommunications carriers, and city utilities operating within city's public right-of-way or doing business within the city. And it establishes the reason that you're setting these fees in pursuant section 30.165, 30 points, I'm sorry, dash three to 30 dash 29 and 30 dash 29 of the municipal code. And in particular, it is the council should adopt this resolution. It provides that you will set franchise fees for cable providers at 5% of gross revenue as expressed in your code or $500, whichever is greater, because your code does specify the dollar and then compensate. It also provides that you're setting the franchise fee for telecommunications carriers for the non-cable service carriers. It's for all providers to provide telecommunications service, whether or not they also provide cable service, I should clarify that, at a rate of 7% of gross revenue for those services or $500, whichever is greater. The third item, I believe that one is worth to be back on, or we may decide to drag this third item, David can provide you with a little more information on this, but as background, some providers and telecations background, some providers and telecommunications carriers are usually putting fiber or cable, very seldom use cable, but are putting fiber through your city, but are not stopping to provide services within the city. Sometimes we call those backhaul providers. In any case, for those providers, providing a percentage of gross revenue structure wouldn't be useful, it wouldn't reimburse you for their use of the right-of-way. And so we suggest a term, a, a dollar per linear foot equation, and that will be talking to you about what the appropriate dollar per linear foot is. Of course, there's also the five hundred dollar, um, minimum there. The fourth item on your resolution is, um, a franchise fee for city-owned utilities, and that, um, has set that, and I'm sorry, I don't have my computer not bringing up your city council packet, so I'm working with a draft. David, did you just determine the percentage for the city-owned utilities?
Yeah, that has been for years, it's seven percent.
Seven percent. Um, or five hundred dollars, whichever is greater. So that is the substance of the resolution before you. I don't know, is David, you want to talk about item three, the per linear foot?
Yeah, let me just, uh, I think we're gonna ask that you delete that from your, from your resolution. We do, we do currently have one franchise agreement with spread communications that has a flat rate, so I don't know how that translates into a per linear foot, so we really wanna go do a little bit backwards calculation, see what our current charges are, see what's going on in the marketplace, and then we're currently negotiating with WAVE, uh, who may be subject as well to this type of approach, depending on what their ultimate service delivery looks like, so we're gonna wanna come back to you on this particular part of the fee setting, but I think we're good with everything else that's in there.
Can I, item five, I was able to pull up the city's, um, packet, the, um, council packet, and I want to make sure, um, there was a blank for that, filled in there, David, and I wanna make sure that was filled in, in the registration fee?
That ended up at fifty dollars a month, I can be, Christie.
Okay, alright, and, um, what I recommend at this time is that you strike five also, and, um, that will bring it back to you, um, at a later date.
Okay, council members, questions for faculty, for staff on the phone or in the room? Counselor Day, did you have a question?
I do.
Please do.
Is it safe to assume, oh, let's try it right now, so Minnet is paying a five percent of their gross, I think, for franchise fee now, is it a separate, I don't, I don't really look at that.
That's for their telecommunications, that's for their, I'm sorry, for their cable services.
Cable services, okay, and is it a separate line item, or is it included in the?
It should be a separate distribution to us, I believe. The franchise fee.
Clarification.
Franchise fee because Minnet is separately included.
It's, so, Minnet bill, what I know that, for example, like, the lowest you can go down basically is, is fifty dollars a month. So it would be fifty dollars a month, and then it would be another two dollars and fifty cents a month, or franchise fee.
So is Minnet charging you that franchise fee?
That's the question.
I, I don't know, because I don't see, uh, Minnet's, um, bills.
I think if you looked at your Minnet bill, you would see it labeled.
That's what I was saying, franchise.
I'm not sure what they call it, but I could be, I'd be franchise fee.
So it's probably safe to say that all of these would just be passed on to the?
Yep, yep.
Generally, uh, the, the city does not pass those, that franchise fee onto, on our utilities.
Okay, alright, alright.
And may I add, although it's not really, um, a part of your population, I'm sure it may be, but that is a decision for individual carriers and providers, there's no legal requirement that they have, um, that's the point, right?
Right, that makes sense.
Right.
So, I don't, personally, I understand the theory behind doing this, and it makes sense, um, to give you more opportunities in the future to adjust rental revenues, I guess my proposal would be that we, uh, we could add up to five percent, so that our cus, our population isn't being hit by more, you know, we can't owe them taxes, but by bigger bills, simply by doing that. Like, right now, the most that anybody's gonna get is five percent.
On their cable.
On, and that, you know, cable, there's nothing on telecommunications, really. So rather than raising the, if you were raising the rates of cable, of, uh, of data and phone, spread out, so it's two percent, two percent, and one percent, or something along those lines, rather than five percent, seven percent, and, I guess it's seven percent on phone and seven percent on internet.
Functionally, the challenge of that is that not all, not all, you know, not all sources are like, so what we, you know, whatever you charge here is the same sort of terms that we charge to charter, and every customer is different, so whether charter is, I don't know what, I don't know what they can charter, I don't know if they have to, but I don't know what charter has, but I don't know, one, any one customer may have cable, may not have cable, may have voice, may not have voice, may have data, may not have data. So at the end of the day, there's really no way for us to create a, a, you know, a, some kind of formula that says everybody will get charged just five percent, because some will get maybe just two percent, some will get five.
Well, I, I like that in preference to increasing costs by seven percent as far as data.
So the, the phone is already a franchise fee that we collect, and it is already, I believe, at seven percent?
Please do.
Yes, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to clarify that you already have, uh, franchise fees that are similar to the fees that we're establishing by a resolution, uh, these aren't new, uh, you have established them by franchises in the, in the past.
The only thing, cause see, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, the only thing that we're adding here is, um, data, and we do not currently collect on data, internet.
Oh, I don't believe you can force, uh, the charter class on data, but according to your ordinance and the way it's drafted, you could have.
Okay.
There's, we have sentry to help the community that, which doesn't provide.
I can't agree.
We have sentry.
Move your microphone, please, yeah.
I mean, we have sentry telling the community that, and, that not every provider again is the same, so you're gonna create some real legal issues and equity issues if you attempt to divvy these up for some, can't divvy up for one, can't divvy up for the other, so you'll reduce payments, you know, effectively reduce payments for some, you know, by incenting them to draw them out of their franchises, basically, rather than paying what they're already paying. I mean, and I think it's gonna create a complication that is probably unmanageable, in terms of just creating fairness to everybody, to the providers and to the customers.
Well, just adding seven percent to all people who have internet doesn't seem to be very fair.
Well, so.
If I may, I, I wanted to make sure that we're clear, it's my understanding that it's supposed to be policy when they're negotiating for franchises and telecommunications carriers to charge seven percent already, so it's not a, it should be paying a seven percent increase on any bill, because the city has been charging, and I, I don't have all of the franchise fees, but my understanding, the city has negotiated with telecom providers using a seven percent.
So what you're saying is, let me clarify it, so what you're saying here is that we're, we're restating what's, what we're restating in a fee schedule is what's already in a franchise agreement, but we're just stating it as, in a, in a fee schedule also, is that correct?
Yes, I, I think this will help your staff when they're negotiating franchise agreements, to say, you know what, this is what we charge, we charge five percent for cable, seven percent for telecom services, we have a minimum of five hundred, and, um, that's, that's a fair way to treat everybody everywhere, similar providers are going to be treated similarly.
I am, I'm gonna go, Tom? Well, I, I guess maybe, I'm, I'm maybe kind of trying to interpret where you're trying to go, Counselor Day, that, so, do we know, is, is there going to be some increase for some customers, or is it pretty much gonna be the same fees for everybody? Is there going to be a change, an increase in fees for?
We cannot anticipate what the providers will do, however, the increase would likely be, um, if you were to see one, for, for the cable providers who also provide internet and voice, but we're not paying on internet and voice in the past.
Voice.
And so those providers, even though we have an ordinance that requires them to pay on internet and voice, um, if the city, um, intends to enforce this new ordinance, those providers would have to pay seven percent on their internet and voice, when perhaps they weren't doing that before.
Okay, so let's try this again. Or you said that we currently charge, we currently charge for phone, seven percent, maybe, okay. The only one we don't currently charge for is data, is internet.
That's one that we currently do not receive.
Yes, we have a charge for that in our franchise agreement and in our ordinances, however, the city has chosen not to report that, primarily because we are waiting for the May two thousand sixteen, the same ordinance, which has earned our license and stuff.
So right now, it is that, um, the data services are in, data services that are going through the public right-of-way are not paying anything for the using, for that portion, is that correct?
Actually, I, I'd make it even more of a narrative, it's providers provide cable, data, and voice. Many of them started out as purely cable providers, and have been treated as purely cable providers, and only being charged five percent on cable, when in fact, some of them in some communities provide data and voice also.
So what happens is that if all of a sudden there, that cable provider is no longer providing cable, but they're just providing internet, they're not paying anything to, uh, for the use of the public right-of-way, is that correct?
Yes, that's the narrative we always see, but, you know, if you look at it from a competitor's point of view, they're probably thinking, well, why do they pay five percent on only one of their services? When I'm, uh, providing all three services and paying, um, seven percent, or I'm providing similar services and paying a higher fee, and so we're just trying to equalize and fight, you know, and make it a better place for all providers, um, within, within.
Mr. Klein?
So, one other angle, a little bit different, and we've discussed this once before, but a little bit different reason to consider this type of, of, of fee setting for the telecommunications providers, is, as you well know, much of our budget is devoted to subsidizing one of our telecom providers now, to the extent that we can generate more revenues from that telecom provider, we can use that, and I think we would come to you to say, let's do an offset, let's reduce our reliance on the water fund, and increase our reliance on fees generated off the users of the service to cover those deficiencies, those shortfalls, that we expect to experience for years to come, and they have many years to recover yet. Does that make sense? I'm not trying to, maybe I was a little convoluted in how I presented that, but, maybe, you know. We are subsidizing, as we all know, we are subsidizing one of our telecoms to, to close to half a million dollars a year, to the extent that we can raise revenues from the user of that telecom, instead of these water bill things from other users, we can use those revenues from people that use the service.
If we could do that, it would eliminate one of the complaints for citizens who don't use it, Minnet.
Right.
They say, well, I'm paying, I use water, but I don't use Minnet, so I'm paying internet.
Exactly.
I think that is, that would be a positive, I think that'd be perceived as a positive.
Yeah, that's how we would, that's at staff, that's how we would approach it. If we had an opportunity to, you know, to, to not increase revenue, not increase rates, you know, because we know that costs are going down, well, then, you know, we're gonna come to with that kind of recommendation.
Is that clear for everybody?
Not sure. Not increasing rates is gonna do what, what's needed.
I know what you were gonna do, sorry.
But, yeah, I get that. Just so, are there additional questions for the staff presentation? If not, I would love to entertain a, this is a resolution, correct? Yes. I'd love to entertain a, a resolution, probably with the amendments that were suggested, which were the elimination of three and five. If someone would like to.
I guess I just had a question about that.
Please do.
There, there is not a good reason to leave those in there as kind of placeholders, that we would just update the fee later?
Christie, how do you feel about the?
I just, to that, it's really no degree to leave it in, because we, no need to adopt another resolution anyway, so, um, it doesn't, doesn't create any more work to adopt a new resolution, it became a per linear fee, and presenting to the registration fee.
Okay.
Mayor had a question.
Please do.
What, you said, oh, this is a resolution, what, so what does that mean? It means it's not binding, or?
No, I, I'm gonna let staff answer.
I'm, I'm.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm embarrassed to be talking.
The, the question was, um, this is a resolution, what's the difference between resolution and ordinance, please?
Sure. An ordinance affects a great amount of people, a general populace, and it's law, and it requires, um, whatever your charter requires for an ordinance and ordinance goes. A resolution is, um, a thing to use to set, um, rules and regulations and policies that are either changeable, or, um, are less, are, um, meant, uh, less than, uh, legislative action. And so we often, you, I'm guessing, in your city, you all generally have a fee resolution yearly that reviews your, your fees, and this is very similar.
Mr. Klein, you're signaling that?
It's very much, and I echo what Christie said, it's just, if you're looking to analogies, it's like looking at the difference between a, a statute or a law and a rule that comes together.
Good question. Anybody like to suggest action?
Well, if I understand this correctly, uh, I would move to adopt resolution rule one-seven dash one-four-four-seven, uh, striking, um, fees, or the, like, sections three and five. But otherwise, that's contained in the council packet.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I still don't understand, now, this isn't a seven percent increase on people who are using data.
I'm happy to address that for you, um, for franchise agreements for data, just staff, and myself included, negotiate the franchise fee by contract, and I, when I'm negotiating those, I talk to David, and I say, okay, give me all your franchise agreements for similar providers who do the same kind of service, and we look at them, we make sure we're treating everyone who's willing, and then we charge them a percentage. And the guidance that I received from David regarding that, telecommunications providers, is that the percentage of them is seven percent. So those franchise agreements with data providers are binding on both parties, and we negotiate the franchise, and I look to staff to give me guidance on what that franchise fee should be, and that would give me guidance that to be seven percent to those types of providers. Here now, we're dealt with that, we have a franchise agreement, but we also have an ordinance that says, okay, it's gonna be seven percent. Does that make sense? I'm happy to answer any other questions.
The point is, the franchise agreements already contain the seven percent language. It's, it's been questionable in terms of this enforcement, and so when we were in Supreme Court, stepped up and gave us, gave us a ruling, so it's not a. So it's not a change, it's just now you have an ordinance that reflects your franchise agreements.
So then, this resolution will, it, it says, it, it, does it effectively say then that we can charge up to seven percent? Cause I'm seeing it says seven percent.
No, it, it sets it, it says, we have to provide the same terms for costs.
Well, you understand that?
Sure.
Are we basically putting some teeth on that negotiation process?
Yes.
And saying that this is, this is what our, our city requires by ordinance?
Yeah.
Well, this, uh.
And obviously it keeps us on our toes by having the ordinance so that, you know, not just staff, so maybe three steps down the line, it's familiar with the process. Maybe, you know, in ten years, we have new staff, um, and they, they don't know how to negotiate franchise agreements or haven't under, haven't followed city practices. So now they can look into the ordinance and say, oh, this is what we do. And it protects the city because then we treat similar providers similarly.
Does this supersede, uh, any franchise agreements we currently have?
No. Christie, what?
We, we have a provision here that talks about that, and what it says, let's do it. It says that, give, just, um, these amendments, and remember, these are just amendments. You already have the ordinance anyway. But it, what it, what it says, I'm gonna make fun of you, um, is that if there are conflicting provisions to, in, in existing city ordinances or unexpired franchise agreements, um, then the article, then the, the changes that you've made don't apply to those conflicting existing ordinances and unexpired franchise agreements. And I'll read this, and if I wasn't there, we'd read it. "To the extent that this article is not conflict with and can be implemented consistently with existing ordinances and unexpired franchise agreements for the use of the public right of way for cable services or telecom services, this article shall apply to all existing ordinances and unexpired franchise agreements."
Okay.
And if it's conflicting, you already have an existing unexpired franchise agreement, that's definitely not right, we honor that, and when it expires, we go to the statute or to the ordinance agreement.
Can I ask some questions? Okay. Is there other discussion related to this? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and so this is now a vote portion. Let's entertain your questions. All in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that means that we have a three to one with two absent, uh, which, uh, two absent make, uh, those are no votes. That means I get to vote, and I voted aye. Motion carries. We're gonna move on to the, uh, next issue, the Marine Board rulemaking, and, Mr. Klein?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is an issue, we actually received this communication in two ways. One through the Marine Board as part of a public comment solicitation, uh, the other from a resident of the area who was apparently the one who initiated this rulemaking. Uh, as you saw in your packet, um, the resident was concerned about excessive boat, boat noise. Uh, but let, earlier in the summertime, um, there's a lot, probably there was this, uh, there's a lot of boats out there with kind of the, the exposed engines and straight pipe unbuffed engines making a lot of noise. Um, and so he requested that the Marine Board look at a rulemaking to, um, basically add a little more teeth to allow, um, law enforcement officials to, uh, essentially require inspections of the boats and, uh, and make sure the boats are operating properly muffled, uh, engines. Uh, that's the gist of the Marine Board's rulemaking. They're, as part of their normal process, they've identified the changes they're proposing to make, and they're soliciting public comments. They, like I say, they, they reached out to us, um, asking if we had comments. Uh, this, this resident also reached out saying, hey, if you wanna think about providing a comment, then you should. Uh, we talked about it internally and then determined that we didn't think it made sense to, uh, approach the council on a resolution of support for the proposed rulemaking at the Marine Board, so that is what you have in front of you.
Questions for staff?
Not a lot of data to back that, the assertion. It makes sense, I mean, what's happening, without having any patrolling on both counties. It all makes sense, huh?
Uh, his, his contention was that what patrol does occur did not feel empowered to be able to address the issue. The, the rules are there, but they didn't feel like it was called out specifically enough to allow for, um, proper enforcement.
Additional questions?
I was wondering if Chief Mason has any thoughts on, on the.
Chief, would you care to talk?
I, I think that the tool would be helpful. Um, I could see us in the future being involved in some of this, if it affects the livability of our downtown area.
Agree with you.
Particularly since we have a hotel, whereas it's just stuff going in very closely.
Additional questions? It's, so this would be, but this wouldn't be our law enforcement, it would actually be, uh, enforcing this. This would be the Marine Board and their patrols.
The way I read the minutes, it could be our law enforcement if necessary. So I believe that we would always defer that to marine patrols.
But we wouldn't wait for finding a boat to go out.
No, but these people generally are putting in and taking out our launches, so we could, we could certainly go, uh, take enforcement action at that time based upon observations that were causing trouble right in our downtown.
Probably need to get some training for the opposite.
Yeah, we have some experts on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I noticed it said you have to do boat inspection when you go in to do it, and we have people that would be capable of that.
Good.
That's correct.
Additional questions? Counselor Day, would you like to make a, make the, uh?
Well, you know what, I mean, what if I could find where I'm supposed to?
Page eighty-three? Excuse me, page eighty-one, excuse me, by mistake.
In the actual resolutions, I mean.
Right there. I'm trying to find what that says, that's also.
Twenty-three, on eighty-three is the number.
Alright.
I move approved resolution.
Well, that's that, so we're not.
Next page.
I would give that number that you would send.
Yeah, right here. Oh, okay, oh, I got you, okay. I'm sorry. I move approval resolution number seventeen fourteen forty-six.
I have a motion, second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify, say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seven point three, request for executive session minutes. Mr. Klein?
So this, this is before you had the request of one of our, uh, new city counselors. Uh, this is, uh, essentially a request to have limited, uh, access to minutes from executive sessions from the past year prior to, uh, any, this counselor or any of our new counselors taking, uh, taking office, so they would not have had the opportunity to sit in those meetings, would like to get up to speed on those issues. Uh, I think you have a staff report that lays out any, you know, any thoughts on that. Uh, other than that, I don't think we're now making a specific recommendation to.
Seems like a reasonable idea.
I thought it was just I could do a better job if I had some background.
I completely understand. Seems okay, and this would be a case by case basis? Does that sound okay? And then this would, uh, be possible for other, uh, counselors on a case by case basis?
What we'd like to, there's a little bit of a barrier that we'd like to throw around, the privilege, expanding the privileges and the, that documents not leave the office, that they need reviewed here, and, uh, I don't know, maybe we would preview some material to just look for, for any conflicts next in the staff report before we would release a particular document, so that you don't keep it in mind. I don't think I have any issues, but.
So we have option one, looks like it takes care of things on page ninety-five. Wait, so we, it's, uh, move, we could, if we want to say yes, it's move me allow, you know, it is, I like the option one.
Chair, well, I'm. Move to, uh, allow the, uh, request for copies of executive section minutes, um, to Counselor Day and any other new counselors that, current counselors that, uh, would like to receive them.
Is that clear enough? I have a motion, and I need a second from someone, please?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify, say aye. I need a couple more, I think.
Oh, aye.
Aye. And I, this is what I hear. All in favor, signify, say aye. They've said aye. I oppose, none. Motion carries, thank you very much. Okay, is there any other council announcements? If not, somebody can send us home. Mayor? Yes, sir.
I have a thing. Um, I just wanted staff and counselors to, um, but Minnet has submitted to the board of directors their long range, or their strategic plan, prior plan, and that plan will be, has been approved by the board of directors by the board five to one. And that plan will be presented to you within probably the next month, six weeks, depending on timing that we can get together.
We'll be discussing.
We'll be discussing.
We'll be discussing some of that in, uh, in our next council meeting. Did you want to make comments, Klein?
Well, not to them, to one other.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, please.
Uh, I, I forgot to mention, this is actually downstairs in the, during my report, but if you, I know it's in your packet, but I just want to make sure you saw that, uh, on the fifteenth, tomorrow, is, the commissioners are taking comments on their proposed bond measure. Um, if you have, you know, if you, if you have anything that you want to add to track from that discussion, but that's, they're planning on going, referring that to ballot for a may election, uh, I would point out, as far as I can tell, there's nothing in this part of the county that, that would be included as, uh, proposed improvements. Something to note in the last poll kind of breakfast meeting.
There. Thank you. Anything else? Somebody send us home?
Who did you?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.